I'll call the meeting to order. I'll ask everyone to please rise. Councilman Kevin Boone will lead us in prayer, and if you'll please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much for this lovely day today. We thank you for the many blessings you've given us, Lord. We thank you so much for this city, Lord, that you blessed us to live in. Please be with us, Lord, as we make these decisions concerning this city based on your will and your desire, Lord. Keep us all mindful of what you'd like to do. Bless us, Lord, as we go through this day, and be with us as we do. In your blessed and holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are here today, councilman mayor, to discuss the position of city treasurer. There has been one proposal made by the mayor to change that position somewhat, and I know that the mayor has met with each of the council members, I know, two at a time, and maybe in one case, one at a time. I'll read section 1143-3 out of the State of Alabama statute, and I'm just going to read one sentence. And it says that the council shall have authority to fix the terms of office, prescribe their duties, and fix the salaries of the officers. Prior to that, they're talking about the city clerk and the city treasurer. So here's where we are. It says "shall" have the authority. So I believe that the City of Fairhope City Council has exercised the authority to have a city clerk and also a city treasurer, and has, for the past many years, made the appointments of both, fix their terms in office, which run parallel to the council's terms in office, and also prescribe the duties and fix the salaries of all of these officers. So I will counsel, start off by just asking all of you, the mayor has, like I said, met with us and has described her vision for the position of treasurer and what she would like to see done with the position. And I'm going to ask all of you, if you would like to hear that again, and even if you say no, you're familiar with it, I'm still going to give the mayor an opportunity to go through that for maybe as much time as you want to give her. But I will ask you, council, though, do you want to hear all of the changes proposed? In that meeting, it was also proposed to make some changes to the planning department, and those changes are going to be on Monday night's agenda. The changes to the treasurer's office, I had no council members request that to be put on the agenda. I chose not to put that agenda. I had not seen any interest in that second. I know that people may be thinking about that, so now is your time, council. I'll just look to my right and left and ask if there's, would you like to hear all the details of that, or would you like a quick synopsis of what the mayor proposed with regards to the city treasurer's position? Anyone else?
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you. Basically, what I proposed is that the way most municipalities, and we actually couldn't find one that was set up like Fairhope, but in virtually all municipalities in the state, there is, you know, a treasury role, and there is a clerk, and oftentimes a finance director. We have all three, but the treasury role is combined either with the clerk or the finance director. More times than not, the finance director. So this is not about taking away an appointment. It's about making the director of finance and treasury one position. And do we need more help in finance? I can tell you, we need more help in every department, but added complacency could be accomplished by creating a manager of treasury and revenue. Again, just a, treasury wouldn't be over purchasing, though. All of these things, the auditor kind of went over as far as complacency. So the way we're operating right now as a finance department is very siloed. We, because of that, a big picture of a full financial state has never been accomplished and easily presented because, you know, not everybody was talking to each other or working together. They were considered, and it felt like two totally different departments, really, in my opinion, more than two departments. But, so I recommended that our current finance director, who has been with the city 13 years, she has an MBA, she's probably worked with me the most this term in really organizing and restructuring the way we do the budget and the way that we do reporting. You know, again, I've mentioned this before, we've taken a city that ran at a $6 million deficit and using over half of utility profits just to break even to a city with Jill's help, I mean, our finance director, to a city that is now almost self-sufficient. And, I mean, that's incredible. I mean, I really can't say enough what has been accomplished in the last two and a half years, and it is because of the close, you know, day-to-day communication that I have with the finance director. And that really needs, as mayor and as the full-time city manager, everybody reports to me, okay? This is not like other cities that have a city administrator, a full-time city administrator or full-time city manager. Everyone reports to me. So I have to have about five key people that I talk to on a regular basis. I can't have 20. I mean, and that's really what it was when I took office. So this is, once again, streamlining for efficiency, which pays out tenfold for taxpayers. And we, what has been accomplished with one department that we started in October of last year is payables have significantly improved. The turnaround time for procurement. Pretty much everything is handled in a fraction of the time that it used to take, because again, you're only adding bureaucracy when you add more chiefs. So that was my input.
Questions, council? Questions of the mayor? Anybody have any questions?
I've got a few, or for the group in general. All right, I met with the mayor last week, maybe the week before, to discuss that. I don't really have an objection with combining the roles as a general idea. I mean, I understand the logic, and it seems like most cities are set up that way. I think that the biggest concern is that, you know, the finance, treasury, they do have different functions. You can have one person do those, but it's more about the checks and balances. And other cities are able to do it, so obviously, I know you can have the checks and balances still in place, but I think the concern has been that there's been so much kickback to the way the, I guess, the way we have approvals for spending here. There's been a lot of kickback to that, so maybe there's some concern that eliminates the checks and balances by combining those two roles.
Well, basically, the most important part of a finance department is separation of roles and duties to be compliant. The way we are structured before I made it one department last year is not compliant. We have a person that can put in the requisition, create the PO, input the invoice, cut the check, and sign it. That's not compliant, you know? And that is actually where we are right now. This is about separation of roles. You can't have, a separation of roles doesn't mean a bunch of different directors and department head. It's just like public works. I mean, he, Richard has a big supervisor over recycling and waste, and we have one person over horticulture. I mean, but I'm in communication with Richard every day. If it wasn't for that communication, I had to literally talk to every department head, I wouldn't get any work done. So this is more compliant and verified through our auditor than where we are now.
Any other questions?
Well, I do about the check-writing process. I thought that only, that we only had two people that were able to sign checks in the city, and that would be you and Jack.
No. Lisa signs most of them, and y'all approved.
Treasurer, Lisa, mayor, and council president.
Well, and you approved, y'all approved Belinda.
As another.
Which is not compliant. It's about the separation of roles.
I agree. I mean, I think there are, you know, it's hard to sit up here and say this without having to discuss personnel, which is a very sensitive subject. And so I, just so that I understand this correctly, what you're proposing would be to make, would be to transition Jill from an employee to an appointed position?
I mean, if council is insistent on having two appointments, then that's what would make sense.
Well, I mean, I think our ordinance is to say there are two appointments right now.
I know ordinances are, you always need to look, how can we do better?
Well, sure.
Just because, always saying, we've always done it this way, that's where I'm trying to get away from, you know, especially internally. We want to always look at ways that we can do better. And if you want two appointments, that's what I recommend it, is doing a director of finance and treasury. It's actually the same title of the person you are interviewing for the position that you want to hire.
Right. Well, you know, mayor, I do agree with you that just because something has been done a certain way does not mean it's the way that it should continue to be done. But I also believe in, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
It was broke. And we have shown that we've had the improvement, and it wasn't compliant.
I believe, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, that when we took office, that our finance and accounting departments received multiple awards for outstanding performance.
That has nothing to do with complacency. I mean, it's.
I would say that it does.
The finance director who's won the awards for the financial, the end-of-the-year financial award.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. You know, I don't.
That's not going to change.
I don't, I don't think that there is any, I personally feel that it's better to keep them separated. I mean, I've always felt, and maybe this is wrong, but my personal feeling has always been that having that treasurer's position is another line of defense in making sure that we're following all the procedures in the way that they need to be done. That might be overkill, and it probably does reduce efficiency. But I'm a stickler, and I think I've made that clear in these meetings, that that's kind of, I'm a rules guy, and I, that's the way I feel about it, and so.
I sent y'all all of the cities that we could find online and asked you to, because you wanted to try to find any cities that were set up like us. We couldn't find any. All we could give you were cities that were structured exactly the way I just told you. So if it's good for virtually all of other municipalities, I don't understand why we would do it differently.
We'll take your leaders and not followers.
I can tell you right now, that is not the truth.
All right. Okay, does anybody else have any comments or suggestions? I want to turn this over to the council now for discussion. This is a council appointment and council position, and I really need to hear from the council. And I do appreciate all of your comments. I gave you plenty of time to express your.
Yeah, and I do, I mean, even though I'm saying I think it should, in my personal opinion, I think it should stay the same, the way it's been done. You know, make no mistake, that is not a reflection of my opinion of Jill, because I think what the mayor talked about, which is what Jill's done with the budget and the way it's been transitioned since we started, has been wonderful. I mean, I think the way we view these budgets now versus the way we did when we started, it's much more streamlined, and it's done in a much better way. My own personal opinion, though, is that keeping them separated does create maybe some inefficiencies, but it keeps the, what I perceive is the required checks and balances in place.
I've got a question. When you're mayor, when you're referring to two appointments, you're talking about having a clerk and a treasurer, is that what you mean by the two?
No.
Are you talking about making the finance director and the treasurer?
The finance director, the treasurer is either a component of the finance director or a component of the city clerk. That's it.
And I did listen, Mobiles County has a finance director and a treasurer.
At the present time, our clerk and treasurer are not at all connected. They're two separate appointed positions. Those were just, those were.
We couldn't find another one.
They could be, and they are in many small towns in Alabama, absolutely, but Fairhope made that change probably 15, 16 years ago and got away from that, as most, you know, larger municipalities do. Counsel, any other comments?
That's not true.
Before I talk. I, I agree with Jimmy, and I'm sorry, I agree with Jay. Not that I disagree with Jimmy, but Jimmy didn't say it. Jay brought it up. I took the liberty typing up a resolution that I feel we should adopt, and it's pretty pointed, and it's well within the council's rights. You know, I thought about, when we ran for office, nobody said, the first thing I'm going to do is fix that treasury department. The first thing I'm going to do is fix that finance department. The finance department of treasury was rocking and rolling, winning awards every year, getting accolades, doing a great job. I disagree with the mayor's comments about operating at $6 million in debt in the hole every year, when we paid off $24 to $25 million in debt in the previous four years. It's kind of hard to operate in the red and then pay off $25 million worth of debt. I think we were on very sound financial footing, and I think that we still are. Nancy Wilson was the treasurer, and then she retired, and we hired Deborah Smith. Everything was rocking along just fine. There were still no complaints about the finances on either side of the coin, whether you talk about the finance department or the treasurer's department. And then Deborah resigned, and we hired another person, and that was a rocky road. He decided to part ways. The mayor upheld that, as did the council, and I think that in the interim, we've been without a treasurer. And I go back to the checks and balances that Jay discussed. I think that the system worked extremely well, and I also agree, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And this resolution that I handed each of you, which I printed on my own, as well as the job description, which was what the five candidates that we interviewed all were given as to the job description. I have fixed that as Exhibit A. And also, this resolution states that if we make an appointee, it shall begin Monday, because we couldn't agree on the first four candidates. I couldn't get three council members to agree on any of those. So we were searching and searching and searching for someone, and we finally found a candidate that not only all five council members liked tremendously, it was also someone that the mayor said that she liked as well. And I know that all six of us could work with this person. I talked to this potential appointee, and they said that they would like to take three days off at the end of May. They had something already on their schedule that they would like to take off work for. And so I put in there that they could take three days off the last week in May without pay. And then the last one is just putting, the last bullet here is just putting the treasurer back in the treasurer's office, where it's always been located, and all of the people that serve under the treasurer back in their historic offices, so that they can, you know, that they can be efficient and work together. So simply, basically, if this proposal had never come up, we would just make an appointment, and we'd be right back to what this proposes.
Except for locating them all, too. I mean, it's micromanagement to the T.
It's 1,000 percent the city council's prerogative to place anywhere, anywhere in the city that we want, including your office. We can put that anywhere in the city we want. And all I'm doing is putting people back where they were. I'm glad you found that humorous. I don't.
It is absolutely humorous. You always humor me, Jack.
Sure you do. Well, council, I've given my presentation, that's, it pretty much speaks for itself. It keeps things exactly as it has been, and I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
I can say, after having interviewed Mrs. Creach, I thought she was a fantastic candidate, would certainly do a good job, has lots of experience. You know, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, location and things like that, I don't see any need to get into the specifics or stuff like that.
It actually defines as our role, shall, shall prescribe the offices. Why skirt that duty?
It's the office that they hold, not the physical office.
Mr. City Attorney, can you clarify that for us, please, sir?
I do.
I knew that you would bring this up.
Yeah, ALMAM Code 114356, management control of finances and real property of the municipality except as otherwise provided. Council shall have the management and control of the finances and all the property, real and personal, belonging to the city or town. That includes buildings, everything out there. And I believe that's been taught with the, by the league as well, so.
They've gone through many case studies in which the council can prescribe the physical location of the offices. It's really not a big deal. It's literally putting the treasurer back where the treasurer rightfully goes. As a very high officer of the city, they have the right to go in there, and the other people that work for them have a right to be in the same hallway as they have always been. This is not a sweeping change. It's just putting things back to where it should be. And this council needs to put their foot down, take control of the things that we're supposed to control. The state statute doesn't say might, it said shall.
This is all part of council president's prerogative. If this was really about communication, what is best, y'all would have all been a part of this. But it never is. It's always about.
It's a vast conspiracy against you, mayor.
The council president's agenda.
It's just a vast conspiracy against you.
And this is about as detailed as you can get, including the people that, not just the treasurer, but the other people and where they would be located.
Absolutely didn't want it to be a question. Mayor, you're out of order. I haven't recognized you.
This is getting more and more entertaining.
I think we should, I mean, I think it's good to have a, just a regular back-and-forth conversation here. I mean, I don't see why we can't kick these ideas around.
Yeah, I think, mayor, my question to you would be, is do you have any objection to putting the treasurer, if appointed, back in the office that has historically been held by the treasurer?
We put it by, in the two offices where the magistrates were, because we wanted to put the assistant right next door. Their office, there's a, it's right there, it's more, and we changed, but we put a lot of thought into this. A lot of people internally put a lot of thought into this, and we're the ones that work in there day-to-day. You know, we're not doing anything based on, but productivity. And when decisions are being made on a very, you know, micro-management type of way from council, it just, it really, you have to question why, and this is really only coming from one person.
You know, mayor, we could turn that around and say, we want to question why you wanted to make all the changes as well, and why do you want to assert the council's authority to do what we're.
I explained why, and there is. As mayor, my prerogative.
What state statute gives us the express right and deems us to do, tells us to do it, but you want to take that away from us. Okay, I've had it. Now, I'll tell you what I'm going to do.
I said, you're having it on one.
I'm asking for a motion to pass this resolution. So moved. Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I mean, I just would say, I think that, I certainly think Kim's the right person to hire. I mean, again, it makes no difference to me whatsoever what office she's in or any of those specifics. I mean, I don't, I don't see any point in weighing in on that kind of stuff, but I do think she's the right person to hire. And again, as far as the, as far as the roles and the structure, I mean, I know it worked in the past, and I don't have a problem leaving it that way. I also wouldn't have a problem combining them. I think it would work either way, but I think Kim would be a good hire and a benefit to the city, so on board with that.
After, after reading this, I guess my thoughts would be similar to what Jimmy's just said. You know, I interviewed Ms. Creach, same as everybody else, and I thought she was a very capable candidate, and I was very excited after meeting her and with a lot of the recommendations that we received about her, including a lot of people that I think very highly of. You know, as far as the office space is concerned, you know, if it's a matter of efficiency, I understand wanting to do it that way, whether it's your idea of efficiency or Jack's. But with the idea that she'd start Monday, and I'm assuming that someone's in the office previously occupied by the treasurer.
I would think that we'd give a reasonable amount of time to move that person out of that office. I wasn't thinking they had to be out at 8:00 AM Monday. But I, too, have given a lot of thought to those positions, and probably as the council member that spends the most time with the treasurer, I find extreme efficiency in having everyone that I need to talk to to get the answers that I need right there together.
It's, for him, it's about power and then subordination. It's not about doing things right and for the good of the city. It's about what's convenient for you and using people as pawns to accomplish what you want.
Jay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I mean, I'm just, you know, without knowing, without having studied the layout of what your current idea is and exactly.
It wasn't just mine.
Well, I'm saying, but what's your, you're the one speaking for it, is what I mean. You know, I don't know that one's better than the other. I don't know if it's something that we couldn't let them occupy the offices that you've set out for now, and if the treasurer thinks that's not okay, then maybe we come back and reevaluate it at a later time.
I mean, we're talking about feet.
I truthfully don't care what offices it is.
From each other. I mean, it's just, it's about control, and unfortunately, it's always just been about control, not working together for a better solution.
Any other comments, council? Okay.
I got, I guess just one other comment. I mean, I know we were sort of on a time crunch. I know Ms. Creach needed to, we probably should have already held this meeting before now.
I've spoken to Ms. Creach. She wants to start Monday if she was appointed.
Okay, I guess I'm just, the difference between Friday afternoon and Monday evening, I mean, I guess I thought it was, we were trying to do this because there was something on Monday's agenda that we needed to get in.
Well, we have 30 items on Monday's agenda in an executive session, and we've taken over 30 minutes now. And the other thing is not to let the qualified candidate get out of our, slip away, or we'd be another seven months trying to hire someone.
I agree with that. I agree she's the right person. I just, I don't know if the optics may look, if she's the right person. I just, I hate for, you know, I think she's the right hire, for sure, so.
Let's talk about the optics. We get five appointments. If there's anybody else hired in the city, nobody sees it. There's not a public meeting. It doesn't matter what day of the week that that person's hired on, it just, it's not a big deal. And I don't think that hiring somebody on a Friday is a big deal. It just happens to be that we have to do it in public. I mean, we don't get a say in any other hire, not a single hire.
That's a good point.
This has nothing to do with y'all's choice. I'm still recommending an appointment, and I'm still recommending hiring the person that y'all want to hire, regardless of the rate that you want to, I mean, it's, you're arguing about things that have nothing to do with my recommendation.
Mayor, I really would ask you to respect the fact that this has been turned over to council now and that we're in council discussion.
And I'm speaking for the citizens.
And we don't, right?
The mayor, that's what the mayor does.
Okay, listen.
I said, y'all. I mean, I, both of you, please don't do this. And I mean, it's both of you.
All right. Any other discussion from council? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, that submit to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? All right. Congratulations, Ms. Creach. You've been appointed treasurer for the City of Fairhope. You've been appointed treasurer for the City of Fairhope. Entertained a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, for adjourn, thank you.